Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Yarmouth Select Board. We've had our town meeting and changed the name of the Board of Selectment to the Select Board. I'm sure I'll go back and forth out of habit. This is a hybrid meeting. Therefore, the following notice has to be read into the record. This is the formally advised that as required by General Laws, Chapter 38, Sections 18 through 25, pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16, 2021, as extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. The Yarmouth Select Board will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, November 28, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 through 28 South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below. And the Zoom instructions follow, which are on the town website, to join by computer or by telephone. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First order of business is public announcements, and we're going to hear from our town clerk, Mary Maslowsky.
Good evening, Mary Maslowsky. Thank you for the opportunity to remind you and our registered voters that tomorrow night here in the hearing room at between 5:00 and 6:00 PM, we are holding the Old Kings Highway Annual Meeting and Election. So, we did hold it in this hearing room last year. It was successful, so we've called it for this hearing room again tomorrow night. So, as I said, just a friendly reminder, it's between 5:00 and 6:00 PM. We'll open the meeting. We will check in voters and elect one new person to the Old Kings Highway Regional Historic Committee. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Slavemont Smith.
Just a quick announcement. I want to thank everybody who came to town meeting, especially in the new facility. And I think you all agree that it's quite nice and very good. And as it was noted at town meeting, that town meeting is your legislature, and you as individuals are the legislators. You vote for or against articles as you see best for yourself and for the town. And there was good debate on many of the articles, for and against. And so, again, I want to thank you, everybody who came to the meeting and everybody who was watching at home. At future meetings, please make it. It's very important. Your future and your vote is very important. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
So Chairman, I actually do have an announcement. I was going to hold this for my administrator's report, but I thought it would be something that was of pretty high community interest, that there is a public meeting that has just recently been scheduled for the Station Avenue Corridor Study, that the Cape Cod Commission will be assisting us in presenting some of the potential alternatives that this corridor study has uncovered. And that meeting will be held in this room, the town hall meeting room, on Wednesday, December 13, 2023, at 6:00 PM. So that's going to be for the Station Avenue Corridor Study to review some of the findings of the Cape Cod Commission study. And we'll be putting this on the website and social media and all around. But I thought it would be nice for people to hear that.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else? Okay. Public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard on public comment? Let's see, anybody here? Is there anybody in the screen?
No. Hands up.
That's a first.
Yeah.
Tom Sullivan's not here. Vida's not here.
Vida's here. Keep moving.
Okay. We'll move on to the next item then. Recognition of retirees. Make sure I have the right one here. Yes. First one is a recognition of service for Patricia, known as Trish, Cassisi Libraries. Retirement was effective November 6 of 2023. And we will have some words for her at this point.
Thank you. I'm Jane Kane. I'm the library director. Our recently retired reference librarian, Trish, was going to make it on Zoom this evening, but she got in touch with me a few hours ago and let me know that there was a situation at home. And so, she asked me to stand in. And so, here I am. Earlier this month, we hosted a going away party for Trish Cassisi, who started working at the Yarmouth Libraries in the late 1990s. It was the time when libraries were moving away from paper cards in wooden cabinets to find a title or an author and due date cards that we stamped and slipped into the pockets in the back of the book. And we were putting collection information and patron information into electronic format. The Yarmouth Library at that time had just acquired desktop computers. And we heard at the retirement event that it was Trish and her young son who were acting in the role of IT librarians while this went on. He was 12 at the time. The computer that we acquired had 16.16 megabytes of memory, and the installation of an operating system took many hours and required swapping out about 10 floppy disks to get the machine running. Fast forward 24 years, and our latest staff computers are actually laptops that dock to an external workstation, and they come with several gigabytes of memory. Much of what we now do in our lives is based on the computers that we carry around in our pockets, our smartphones. And we find our way in the world using a few apps featuring maps and contact lists. Not quite a papalist work environment yet, but lots of data is at our fingertips. And for this reason, I commend my colleague, Trish Cassisi, for sticking with it through decades of change and innovation. Library work is very different than it was last century. People arrive at the library nowadays, and they're sometimes a little exasperated since they've already used resources that they have at their disposal, and they still can't find what they're looking for. Some arrive at the library, and they're a little sheepish, since they've been gifted one of the latest electronic devices, but they can't figure out how to use it. It's a big part of the reference librarian's job to coach and counsel these people to success, to find the needed information and to teach basic and advanced computer skills. It's not an easy role. So I congratulate Trish on her retirement, and I know that we will miss her many talents, her drive to get things done, her patience, and her kindness with our library users. At the last staff meeting she attended, she kind of lectured the younger staff members of the library to remind them to be kind at all times. So, we wish Trish the best of luck as a fellow professional.
Thank you, Jane. We have an official citation that we will have, we will get to her somehow, and it reads as follows. Be it known that the town of Yarmouth hereby recognizes Patricia E. Cassisi on her retirement as adult and reference librarian supervisor effective November 6, 2023, and for dedicated service to the town of Yarmouth. And be it further known that the town of Yarmouth extends its sincerest thanks and appreciation for 24 years of tireless service in the library's division. This citation is duly signed by the Chair of the Yarmouth Select Board on this 28th day of November in the year of our Lord, 2023, and I have signed it on behalf of the entire Board of Selectmen. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
The other employee recognition. There was another one.
Right at the bottom of page one. Right here.
No, no, I got it. I got the original here, but it's, okay, I see. It's Rick Nelson under there. It's for Rick Nelson, Animal Control, effective November 27, 2023. And we're going to have a few words about his service now.
Good evening. Bill Benetti, Natural Resources. I want to thank the board for recognizing all of our retirees. I know that it's appreciated. And I did speak to Rick Nelson, and like Trish, he was unfortunately unable to come tonight, but was very humbled by the recognition. So, Rick has been here for a total of 29 years. His last day was yesterday. He started as a part-time animal control officer in 1994. He became a full-time assistant animal control officer in 2000. In 2005, he became the full-time animal control officer due to staffing reductions at the time and the retirement of the prior animal control officer. Rick was the only animal control officer representing the animal control section of Natural Resources from that point forward. Rick is by far one of the best animal handlers that I have ever seen. He has an innate way of handling all different types of animals with all different types of temperaments, sometimes not so pleasant temperaments. Truly an animal whisperer. Rick has also shown an ability to facilitate positive outcomes, offering creative solutions in difficult situations involving animals and pet owners in crisis. Over the years, Rick has been very involved in community outreach, such as the facilitation of pet food to families in need, the blessing of the animals, and sponsorship of local rabies vaccination clinics. Also, for many years, Rick has been the town's liaison to the North Pole, playing a huge role in the annual Santa run on the Bass River. On a personal basis, I mean, Rick was not only employee, but you know, he's been a friend of mine, part of the DNR family for all these years. A lesser-known fact about Rick is, and some of you may now see him upon his retirement, playing at some local venues under the stage name of Owen Money. See, Rick is an accomplished musician. He's an old soul with an eclectic taste. My kids always remind me of the time that years ago, he came to an event at my house, and he had constructed a wash tub base, which he proceeded to play and perform a little concert with, with a wash tub base. Rick's a very neat guy for anybody who doesn't know him. So again, we thank you, the board, and on behalf of Natural Resources, I wish Rick all the best in this next chapter.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
We likewise have a official citation from him, which reads as follows. Be it known that the town of Yarmouth hereby recognizes Richard W. Nelson on his retirement as animal control officer effective November 27, 2023, and for dedicated service to the town of Yarmouth. And be it further known that the town of Yarmouth extends its sincerest thanks and appreciation for 29 years of tireless service in the Natural Resources Division. This citation is duly signed by the Chair of the Yarmouth Select Board on this 28th day of November in the year of our Lord, 2023, and I have signed it on behalf of the entire Board of Selectmen, and we'll see that he gets that. Thank you. All right. We have a number of licensing matters tonight. First one is Ryan Family Amusements. People here on that one. Want to come forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
I see Attorney Tardif there. Do you want to introduce yourselves for the record? And then I'll read the legal notice, and then you can commit.
Sure. My name is Paul Tardif, an attorney in Yarmouthport.
I'm Peter Campbell from Ryan Family Amusements.
Thank you. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, acting as a local licensing authority, has received an application from Ryan Family Amusements, DBA Ryan Family Amusements, Peter Campbell, Manager, 1067 Route 28 South Yarmouth, for an alteration of premises to remove the formerly approved cornhole area and replace it with an inflatable air park. The air park will add 5,000 square feet to the current license, as well as renovate 3,341 square feet of the second floor, for a total of 32,783 square feet. Weekday and Sunday entertainment applications have also been filed to add this parcel to the current licenses. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 28, 2023, at the Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 through 28 South Yarmouth, Mass. The Selectmen's meeting begins at 6:00 PM. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 PM Friday, November 24, 2023, at the Licensing Department located at the Town Hall, or can be submitted electronically to publiccomment@yarmouth.ma.us. Okay. Attorney Tardif, why don't you tell us a little bit about the alterations of premises that are being proposed and the expansion of the licenses?
And previously, you had approved the liquor license, going way back, but Mr. Campbell has been the manager there for a number of years without incident. The property, you probably know, is right down the street at 1067 Route 6, Route 28. It was a couple of years ago, we came and we were able to secure some additional space next to the bowling alley. If you've been in there, you know they have all the lanes, but the property to the left of that, if you're looking at it from the street, was the old fitness center, and there was a liquor store after that, and it is a taller building. It's two stories. And that space became available, so the lease was made for that property too. So Ryan has been slowly moving into there. Relief has been always secured with the Zoning Board of Appeals for the uses to expand anything, and we've already done that at the last meeting, I think it was at the end of October. And prior relief was also given for, to add axe throwing and a cornhole area and some game rooms and things like that. Not the whole space, but just that area. And that's done very well, again, without incident. I know there's always a little apprehension when you talk about axes and drinking, but I can tell you that it was, it's well managed, it's well handled, people really enjoy it, and it's going strong. Cornhole, it does take up a lot of area, but with the new, the new space and the new idea that we're going to be going in, that's going to be going in there, I think it's time for the, remove the cornhole area. So as you indicated, we're going to be utilizing the full space now. It's about 5,000 square feet on one area, and then upstairs is another 33, 141 square feet. And this is going to house an air park. And if you're like me, the first time, you say, what is an air park? Well, I brought pictures so you can understand this, and maybe you can ask questions of Mr. Campbell what this is, but I will pass these out momentarily. But basically, it's another, I'm not going to explain it. I'm going to show it to you.
Thank you.
Do you want to try to explain it?
The air park's, it's an interactive play area for adults and children, family-oriented. We have different activities. There'll be dodgeball. There'll be, it's not rock climbing, but it's similar to rock climbing. There's different activities you can play in that.
You've got to separate the dodgeball from the axes.
Yeah, right. Yeah, yes. And slides. It really is an interactive play area for the whole family.
And as you can see, it's not a, it's not something that you just put in, you know, in a closet.
It's not a moon bounce that, you know, you blow up and take down the next day.
Right. It's a pretty big facility that's going to be installed permanently there, so it'll be on the first floor. The second floor is going to be accessed through stairs and a lift or elevator to get up to the second floor, but it'll be open to below for a lot of that space. That's why there's a difference in the floor area. You'll be able to look down into it and see activities, so parents can keep an eye on people. There's also going to be an activity room up there, like a birthday party room, and there will be a service bar up there for when there is an event. If there's not an event, it'll be locked and shut.
The service bar will be upstairs?
I'm sorry?
It'll be upstairs.
It will be upstairs. There's already one.
For private events?
That's it, yeah. And there's one below too, and that, where the axe throwing is, and that again, is not open all the time. It's just for events near, you know, party rooms and things like that, when you have either corporate events coming in. So, that's really what we're looking for, for the expansion. We're looking for a major expansion of the use, but it is integrated into the whole facility. So, we're hoping that the liquor license can include that area as well. And with the past history over there, and with Mr. Campbell watching everything and the way he's been doing it, I think we're, this is going to be a safe bet. And the entertainment licenses also have to be amended just to include that space as well, so that's why we brought that as well. So, that's really what we're doing. We're growing, which is great, and it's good for Ryan Family, it's good for Yarmouth as well.
Thank you. Can we go to the public? Does anybody want to speak in favor of this proposal? Does anyone want to speak in opposition to it?
Can I just ask about the parking?
Ma'am, if you could come to the microphone, please?
She say something about parking?
Yes. Are we, is there enough parking for the additional space to be used? Because that parking lot's pretty full most of the time.
Didn't you go through site plan review?
We did.
For this?
Yep.
What did they say about parking?
Not a lot, because that entire parking area in front, all the way past the post office, is used in the evenings when the post office is closed. So, there is an offset there. Most of the businesses in the evenings, and so it works pretty well. I don't think we've had any problem with parking that we're aware of.
Is that when you expect most of your activity in the evening?
Evening and weekends.
And weekends.
Okay. I just had a question. Just wanted to know how that was going to work.
Did you state your name, ma'am, for the record?
Audrey Ferns, Women of Butter.
Women of Butter?
Right.
Okay. Start with the board, to see if the board has any questions. Peter?
Yeah, on the, on the license, on the licensing, the ad, it talks about you're going to redo 5,000 square feet, renovate 3,300 feet for a total of 32,783. It's a little confusing that 32,783 square feet is the total of the bowling alley plus the old daggets.
Everything, correct.
Right. Everything included. So, it's just a little, little confusing. Right. I, I think that what you're proposing will be very nice. One of the issues that's come up with other, other spaces that they've got bouncing stuff is cleanliness, and what is your plan to keep the place clean? And I know your facility is immaculate right now, but I'm asking the question.
Mr. Smith, it's state-regulated. This falls under like almost an amusement ride. It's not something you can have in your backyard, so there is strict guidelines with cleanliness and disinfecting.
Okay. Thank you.
Douglas.
Just a comment that I think this would be a great addition to Yarmouth. Thank you very much. Glad to see it. This is a year-round activity. This is the kind of thing we're really looking for.
Okay. Dan?
Peter and Paul.
Mary's at home cooking dinner.
This is amazing. I've never seen anything like this. Does anybody on the Cape have something like this?
The closest place to us is Foxborough.
Okay. Yeah, I've never seen it. It's amazing. You guys always want an amazing operation there. We've never had issues with the Campbell family or the, the other owners of the facility. The only question that pops into my mind is, is the one of mixing alcohol with this kind of activity, along with the axes and along with everything else. How do you guard against intoxicated people getting involved with this type of activity?
Well, we're very vigilant with our alcohol service procedures as it is. You won't be able to have alcohol in the
Right.
actual area where the air park takes place. There's going to be a viewing area where you can have a drink, you can watch your youngsters. We're going to have multiple, we haven't even determined the amount of staff. We're talking with the designers of the air park and actually how many people we're actually going to have to have to oversee it, and we take that very seriously.
Okay. That's good. More jobs. That's great. All right. I am very supportive. You guys have always run a first-rate show over there, so looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would agree, it's a fascinating proposal. I'd like you to expand a little bit more on the requirements for keeping it clean, the disinfecting, because I think that's helpful information for us all to be aware of.
Well, I believe Mr. Smith already commented on how clean we keep our facilities as it is. We operate multiple places, Capewide and off Cape now. We take that very seriously, as well as we do alcohol service. There is procedures that the state mandates for different types of amusement rides and cleanliness too. And I'm sure we're going to take and go well above and beyond what they recommend.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that there's a problem. I would agree with my colleagues. I think you do a wonderful job, and you know, it's great, actually, you know, I know there's a concern about parking, but I love seeing that parking lot filled, because you know that you're dealing with families having a good time, and there are not many places where families can go and recreate and have a good time together. So, I think that's one of the great things that happens at your place.
I think the other thing the board needs to remember hasn't, wasn't too long ago, but when COVID shut down a lot of businesses, their business, because of the classification, was one of the last to open. They were shut down almost probably longer than most businesses in the state, so you don't have to tell them to keep it clean because they want to stay open. So, that was a, that was a crippling order that put them out of business for a long, long time.
When do you think you're going to be able to get this up and running? What's the game plan?
We were hoping for mid-January, but it's more looking like February.
We're in February, yeah. Now, I don't have any more questions, Mr. Chairman. I'm very comfortable with this.
So in terms of the, just to be clear on this, the liquor license, the expansion's going to be from what to what? To cover what area now?
Well, it's, the current license list, 24,442 square feet. And so, we're going to 32 and, what do you say, 32 and change in the notice? We're going to have a few more seats upstairs in that viewing area. There's going to be probably another 50 or so seats on.
Just thinking about how we're going to reference this on the license. That's all.
On the license.
On license, Dakota? And how that's stated, is it just give them, does it just state a certain number of square feet or?
It does the square feet.
That's all it does? It doesn't go beyond that?
It listed the axe-throwing areas and things like that too.
It lists the areas as well?
It says 20 lanes of bowling arcade area with redemption center, three bathroom storage area, party function room, four lane axe-throwing, four lane cornhole, which again, will be coming off, and an as-needed service bar, a total of 110 seats and 24,442 square feet. That's on the license, current license.
That's what's on there now.
Yep.
So we're just going to strike the cornhole provision?
And the air park.
Add the air park, will that do it?
And probably the second floor viewing area.
Second floor with another service bar, and then just update the square footage, and I think we're done.
Yeah, but you don't. Yeah, but you, you don't. All right. How many square feet are upstairs?
Thirty, what is it? Thirty-four hundred, thirty-three, forty-one?
How many?
Three thousand, three hundred and forty-one.
So you're just going to have like, you're not going to serve alcohol in that entire area?
When there's an event going on, yeah, there'll be a service bar up there.
You will?
Yes.
But you, so you'll, so you'll be using that entire second floor area for alcohol service, not just the bar, right? I mean, people will actually be up there drinking?
Yeah, it'd be a wide open area that you can look down into areas to, to view. So yes.
All right, so we'd have to add the second floor as well?
Yeah.
So strike the cornhole, add the air park in the second floor, and we'll be good?
And just say, again, the as-needed service bars, if you want to just add an S on that, and then the square footage.
And then up the square footage total.
Yeah, the total seats, I mean, I think we're going to be about, how many up there? Fifty-five, sixty seats?
Probably additional 55. So it'll be around 180 maybe?
165?
Talking about seats?
Yes. Yeah, I.
Board of Health will tell you what you have to do there.
Yeah.
I'm not worried about that.
Well, just because there's, there's seats listed on the license, if, if we want to make sure that someone comes in, counts 110 seats.
Did you talk to the Board of Health about that? As to what the allowable number of seats is going to be?
They were, I don't know if we did.
Board of Health, Board of Health was at the site plan. When we discussed it, a lot of the area up there is, is going to be the, the same people that would be downstairs. They're, they're going to congregate upstairs and then move back downstairs. So it's hard to put an actual number per se.
They are looking for a seating plan. That's all.
Okay. So you got all that, Dakota?
Yes.
Okay. So do I have a motion to grant the liquor license to cover the premises that we've just described?
You got to close the hearing first. You got to close the hearing first?
Oh, yeah. Do we have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion, second.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
All right. So do, so do we have a, a motion to approve the alcohol license to cover the areas that we've just described, which basically is substituting the air park for the cornhole area, adding the upstairs? And what was the other one?
Service bars. There's one downstairs. We're going to add another.
Service bars, one down and one up?
And then the square footage.
And then increasing the square footage to a total of 32,783, I believe is the number. Is that right?
Seven eighty-three, huh?
No, it says renovate 3341 to come up to a total of 32,783 square feet. So do I have a motion to that effect?
Motion to that effect.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed? So that passes unanimously. Now we have to look at the entertainment licenses. So what, what, what's going to be the change on that over what exists now?
The cornhole area has got to be removed. I would say we add the same, some of the same language we had.
So are we going to conduct entertainment in the, all the areas we just described?
Well, the air park is entertainment.
So.
We have music there, right?
So the cornhole area is getting removed. We're adding for the entertainment. Cornhole is removed. We're adding the air park. What other changes other?
Well, we just, the, all the amplification, recorded music to jukebox and DJ, which is what is listed, is going to be expanded into those areas. Nothing's changing.
But that's there now, isn't it?
Well, not in those new areas.
The new areas.
Oh, no, those forms of entertainment. So you're just going to expand them to those two changes, correct?
To the, the extra seven.
I just want to make sure you're covered for what you want.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just, whatever we have now, we want to expand it to add another 8,341 square feet, the rest of the place, so we can put music and.
Okay, you have that, Dakota? All right. So do I have a motion to?
Mr. Chairman, before that, I got a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
On the application, under, check all that apply, under shows, it's left blank. I'm assuming that means no show?
Shows?
It, it says shows, theater, movies, floor show, light show, public show, no show. But it's left blank.
It's left blank?
Yeah.
I don't think we're having any shows.
Then can you put no show on your, on your application, just to make sure it's clear?
Sure.
Right. And, and that's in two places. Also.
I guess if it's not checked, then they're not asking for it.
Well, it, it's giving, it's giving several options, including not having a show at all.
The hours are going to stay the same?
Yes.
10 a.m. to 11 p.m., right?
And, and days of entertainment is also left blank. I, I, it makes me nervous when things are not complete. If it's NA, it's NA, but I'm assuming your days are going to be Monday, Monday through Friday? Excuse me?
What page are you referring to?
I'm looking at, I, page one, application for weekday, week, annual weekday entertainment. About, it says hours of entertainment, 10 a.m. to 11 a.m. Days of entertainment is left blank.
Last three pages. Mike, keep going. The last three.
The last three?
Yep. There you go. You have it.
One, two, three.
Oh, I'm sorry. I mean, the last six pages then, because it's, it's.
Two, four, six. Complications. Okay.
Come back one more.
Mr. Smith, there, we do.
Back one more?
It's sort of like a DJ bowling night where we do, if you want to refer to it as disco bowling. We call it mystic bowling. We've been doing it for 25 years.
I, I, I have no problem with the description.
Your show, I don't know.
I don't know what category that falls under.
It's just, blank is blank.
Could be a light, light show, is it? I guess.
I mean, if it's, as far as I read this, if it's not checked, then I'm asking for it. You know?
I make the argument if it says no show, you need to click, click no show.
Where's that? No show?
I guess we could call it a light show.
At the end on the right.
One of the last pages?
It says.
Go back to that page you were on. Get there.
Shows, theater. No, they're not looking for that. Movies, not looking for it. Floor shows, not looking for it. Light show, public show, no show.
Might be a light show, Mike, because we do that, that bowling with the disco lights and.
Disco bowling.
Yeah.
You have that?
Yeah.
Got it.
Lot of fun.
Again, we've been doing that. It's all inside. It's.
You want to amend your application to check that you will have light shows?
Okay.
Right?
And the, what was the other one, Pete?
Days of entertainment, left blank.
Where's that?
Same page, roughly in the dead center, right under hours, right under hours of entertainment. And this.
So that's the weekday application?
This would be Monday through Friday.
Actually, it's Monday through Saturday, isn't it?
Saturday considered a weekday?
And then, and then the Sunday is a special license?
Yeah, Sunday's.
Sunday separate, yes. So Monday through Saturday.
So Monday through Saturday inclusive.
That's on the weekday and then Sunday on the Sunday, right?
Correct.
So days of entertainment is going to be Monday to Saturday, correct?
Right.
10 a.m. to 11 p.m. So you want to make that amendment as well.
And last but not least, any portion of the public area, it's, is it going to be any, any nakedness? And that's left blank as well. I, I, I'm not trying to be picky. I just, it needs to be completed.
Where's, usually that is checked off, no. But where is that one?
Right at the top of the next.
Is that the same page?
No, keep going.
On a different night, I think.
Oh, this one? Yeah, you got to check that one out. So the answer's no. So that, that's a good catch.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure we're okay with the, the hours on the current license are 11 a.m. to 12 a.m.
Oh, are they?
And 10 a.m. to 12 a.m. on a Sunday. We like to just keep the same. That's okay.
Okay, so give me the, give me the current weekdays again?
The weekdays are 11 a.m. to 12 a.m., Monday through Saturday.
11 to 12 a.m. Okay, that's the Monday through Saturday.
Yeah, the Sunday is 10 a.m. through 12 a.m.
10.
And I think that's, yeah.
10 a.m. to, to when?
12 a.m.
12 a.m.?
Yes.
Okay. And you want the same hours?
Correct.
All right. Okay, so this is, so on the weekday, we're going to have the same hours, 11 a.m. to 12 a.m., Monday through Saturday. And the entertainment areas will be where the former cornhole setup was, correct?
And.
And.
And the additional upstairs.
And the additional upstairs. Any other areas that'd be affected by this entertainment license?
Where the air park is going to be.
Yeah, the air park.
Correct.
Air park itself.
Okay, so with that understanding, do I have a motion to, to grant the modified entertainment licenses?
Do you want?
Or weekday?
Show more.
Have a second?
Second for the weekday?
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so that passes unanimously. Now, the reason I want to do these separate is so there's no confusion. And so on Sunday, you want to keep the same hours, which is 10 a.m. to 12 a.m., right?
Right.
And the same changes in area that we've just mentioned for the weekday licenses. Anything else?
Uh, no, sir.
No? Okay. So do I have a motion to that effect for the Sunday licenses?
Motion for the Sunday?
Second.
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? I think we got it all.
Thank you.
Any problem, let us know. But I, I think, I know it was a little belabored, but I want to just make sure that the licenses comport with what you're trying to do in the businesses, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That was a little confusing at times. Thank you, board members, for your patience with that one. This is an application for a new package store license. PMJD Guys, doing business as the Other Guys, 16 North Main Street, South Yarmouth. Are you guys ready? Or I should say, are you Other Guys ready? So this is the former Carlucis?
Yes.
That we're talking about, just for sake of reference. Okay, so you want to introduce yourselves and then I'll read the legal notice into the record, then we can have the hearing?
Sure. I'm Peter Mori.
I am Chris DeArmond, or James Christopher DeArmond.
Thank you. Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, whoop, no, that's Ryan Amusement. You don't want that. Here it is. Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority for the town of Yarmouth, has received an application for a new annual wine and malt package store license from PMJD Guys, Inc., doing business as the Other Guys, 16 North Main Street, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. Peter Mori, manager. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 28, 2023, at the Town Hall, 11:46 through 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. The selectmen's meeting begins at 6 p.m. Written comments will be accepted until 4, 4:30 p.m. Friday, November 24, 2023, at the licensing department located at Town Hall. It can be submitted electronically to publiccomment@yarmouth MA.us. Before we start, just for sake of clarification, I was a little confused when I got this application because it was talking about a package store license, and then I was looking at seating. And I said, something's wrong here, you know, because I didn't understand exactly the configuration of the store. As I understand it, it's going to kind of like follow the Peterson's Market model, where you're going to have a dedicated section for the retail sale of, sale of alcohol, and then an eat-in restaurant that does not involve alcohol. Am I correct on that?
A takeout restaurant, not eat-in.
It would just take out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any seating on the floor plan would just be like a waiting area.
Is that all it's for?
Yeah.
Okay. So takeout restaurant, and then the package store. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so we're going to be offering pizza, wings, sandwiches, breakfast in the morning, breakfast sandwiches, burritos, tacos. And we want to also offer beer and wine for sale. No on-premise consumption, all to-go, all takeout. We hope to be like a kind of a one-stop store. You come in, you get your food. You want to get some beer, some wine, some milk, some bread, whatever you need to go home and, you know, have kind of everything in one spot.
Okay. And you've met with Sergeant Hennessy, right?
Yes.
You've gone through all the alcohol regulations and everything?
Yes.
We saw something in here to that effect. Yeah, here it is. And Peter, you have 25 years' experience in the restaurant slash alcohol operations?
Yes.
Which is, which is good. Now, you said that, you said the, I'm just trying, this is just for clarification before I go outside to the public or to my board members. Health Department comments, it says 20 seats and paper service only. What's paper service only mean? Does that mean takeout?
As far as I know, yes.
But you're not looking for any food service inside the building, correct?
Right.
Because it says submit retail food and food establishment license application with SafeServe and allergy certification to the Health Department. I don't know, whatever you have to do with the Health Department, they do have a comment sheet on here. And the Fire Department just says maintain any fire alarms and suppression systems. Building Department, says a building permit app was received, use and occupation and certificate is to be issued after final inspection. So it doesn't appear to be any major issues. All right, is there anybody in the public that would like to be heard on this matter? Yes, sir. Would you state your name and where you live in proximity to the business?
Hi, Tony Manzella, 38 North Main Street, Wyman and Butter. Just sort of curious on the selection of alcohol that's going to be offered. When we first moved in, we had nips on our lawn, like, all the time. That seemed to die down. They always seem to be fireball as well. Don't know why. So just kind of wondering if you're offering that stuff or it's more like, I don't know, craft beers and wine and et cetera?
Yeah, exactly. No alcohol. Uh, no alcohol, uh, no nips, uh, just beer and wine.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, they won't, they won't be able to even carry anything that's other than beer and wine. So if you see nips out there, one of two things is happening. Either they belong to somebody else or somebody's doing something they shouldn't be doing. Okay, we'll go to the board. Mark?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Dan?
I don't have any questions. We were talking earlier about this site. It's struggled a bit, but, you know, looking at this operation, this one could really work.
Well, thank you.
I really wish you well with this. We're very excited to have you in town.
All right.
Thank you.
Dorcas?
Um, I have no questions, I just wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Peter?
No questions, but I was confused about the 20 seats that the Health Department talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz I, cuz I read that you guys, it was takeout only, so you don't need seats. So why are they asking for seats?
Uh, I'm not sure. We'll, we'll clear that up when we're ready for our inspection and everything with Health Department. I've talked to Phil a few times, um, but he, I think he knows that we're takeout only, but we'll get that all straightened out.
We just have jurisdiction over the license. Anything that pertains to the Building Department, the Fire Department, the Health Department, you have to deal with them independently of us. The key to that location's always been parking. That's, that's the issue there.
Yeah, it's kinda gotta get the word out about the parking in the back. And, you know, we're gonna have it all landscaped and cleared out. And there's quite a few, probably about 12 spots back there.
Yeah, 12.
Um, so we hope that people kinda find their way back there and park back there.
Maybe a little signage.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get, we'll get the word out, so...
And we've noticed too, just even with our in-and-out all the time, that it's a lot easier to get in and out of that parking lot than what I think a lot of people assumed. Even I assumed that for years, looking at that parking lot, going, oh, that, you know, that's gonna be such a challenge, and then...
When Whitehead had it though, many years ago, as kind of a, it worked. I mean, they were there a good long time, and people pull up and they grab their stuff, and it wouldn't really hang around very long, and...
Yeah, I think that's the way to go on that spot, just to, you know, quick, quick service and...
Something, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, um...
Won't recognize it.
I have a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Well, wait a minute, we gotta back it out again.
Yeah, we had to close the public hearing.
Close the public portion of the hearing.
Good save.
Motion to close the public, public hearing?
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now can you make your motion?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? All right, so that passes unanimously, wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Any idea when you're going to open?
Uh, I hope for sometime in December, but maybe January.
Best of luck.
Okay. So the next and last licensing matter... Is D.C. Porcelli's Pizzeria and More, 731 Route 28, South Yarmouth. Good evening. Do you wanna state your name for the record and your position with respect to the business?
I'm Eleanor Kelleher, I'm co-owner of D.C. Porcelli's.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna read the, um, legal notice into the record, and then you can... Find it.
I didn't see a legal notice.
You didn't see that one either?
I didn't see, I, not, not that notice.
Anybody have that one? The legal notice?
I just had the application.
For some reason, it's not in the packet, so... Our licensing administrator has gone to hopefully retrieve it. And... Soon she gets back, we'll start.
I don't know if it was included. It's not on the, um, electronic copy.
It's not in the electronic packet either?
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Hope you're having a good seasons?
We're okay, yep, we're getting there.
Good pizza.
Yes, thank you. The summer was real good, so...
Good.
Got all the locals are coming in now, and went out after everyone's gone.
Like I mentioned to you, I had no idea you had all that parking out back.
There's a lot of parking out there.
Yeah, really.
There is, yeah.
Great location.
Oh, you actually did have it advertised?
Yeah.
That's what I was worried about.
No, I didn't.
Feel better already? Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Here we go. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, has received an application for a new pool table license from D.C. Porcelli's Pizzeria and More, 731 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass., for two pool tables to be added to their establishment. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 28, 2023, at the Town Hall, 1146 through 28 South Yarmouth, Mass. The selectmen's meeting begins at 6:00 p.m. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 p.m. Friday, November 24, 2023, at the licensing department located at the Town Hall, or can be submitted electronically to publiccomment@yarmouth MA.us. So what's there now? Pool tables?
Um, we have one, there's one in place right now. We had a friend of ours that lived in the Midwest, was, uh...
There's one there now?
One there in place.
And you're looking to add two?
And when we, yeah. We were looking at...
For a total of three?
No, we're just gonna put in one. We have one there now, and then we're gonna put in one more.
You're only adding one?
Yes.
Okay. So how long has the one pool table been in there?
It's been, um... I wanna say probably a month and a half, two months.
Okay, so you're kinda doing that one backwards, right?
No, what happened was, is a friend of ours that lives in the Midwest was selling his pool table, and the only way to get it out was we had someone that was gonna transport it for us. And he had to bring it out in a specific timeframe, and the pool table had to be taken out of the location. So instead of trying to shuffle it into storage and then bring it back, cuz they weigh thousands of pounds, we just figured, we try to get it in there, get it in place, and we didn't realize at the time that we needed to do all this when we put it in place. So then we applied for the license, and here we are.
Yeah, okay.
Little misunderstanding on our part, so...
All right. So is there anybody in the, um, audience that would like to be heard on this, either for or against? No? Okay, good. Don't have to worry about that. We didn't get any correspondence on this or anything, I wouldn't imagine we would. Okay, so... Anything else you wanna say before I go to my board members? No? Okay, we'll go with Peter. Hope you checked off all your boxes. Peter reads these things carefully.
I hope so.
I, I do, I do read these things. I, I have no questions, and hopefully the, the pool tables, plural, will bring us some more business and get folks to hang around and spend a little bit more money in your place.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Dorcas?
I have no questions, uh, other than just, I, I'm assuming that there used to be tables where the pool tables are going to go, correct?
Yes.
Do I remember?
Prior to, yes.
Right. So you're gonna actually be cutting back in your seating?
Um, pretty much, yeah. We didn't, we don't really have as much seating. I mean, the numbers that we had were based on, you know, maximum capacity, and we didn't really meet that capacity. We're slightly under it anyway, so we just shifted some tables over. As you can see by the floor plan, it's pretty much the same seating. We just kinda moved things around a little bit, so...
Okay. Well, I've had the pleasure of dining at your restaurant, and it's excellent, and, uh, good luck. Sounds great.
Did you play pool?
I didn't play pool, no.
Now you can, now you can do both.
No, I can do that too, yeah.
Dan?
No questions, thank you.
Mark?
I'm fine.
I see here, uh, on the comment sheet from the Health Department, it says inspection to review seating arrangement when complete, so that addresses... I guess, I, I, the way I read this is 90? Does this sound about right now, that you have about 90?
Yes.
Places?
Yeah, we have, I think, uh, 80 for seating.
It says per YFD to per the Yarmouth Fire Department, and then down below, it says inspection to review, inspection to review seating arrangement when complete. So then the Board of Health is gonna tell you, they're gonna give you a number.
Oh, yeah, our inspector is next line.
Whatever that number is, that's it. Okay? The only concern that the Fire Department seems to have is that the tables don't impede exit discharge paths. So they can't be in the way of, if there's an emergency, they can't be in the way of an exit or leading to an exit. Okay, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion to close the public portion?
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to grant the application?
Motion to grant the application?
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You're all set, thank you very much. And thank you, Dakota.
Sorry.
For your excellent service and help. Next item is, if it's 7:30, it's actually early. We don't usually have that. Are we gonna be, once Bob gets set up, we're gonna be ready to go with the department, Fire Department? Okay.
Nope, I have the same thing.
Use this one, because...
Oh, well, we're not, I don't think, you don't wanna...
It shows up on the television screen, whereas the little laser doesn't show up.
I don't think we'd be pointing, but thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's nice to have you here, chief.
Thank you.
Elated happy birthday.
Oh, thank you. Five-oh.
So tonight, we have a presentation on the Fire Department Strategic Plan. And whenever you're ready.
Uh, good evening.
Again.
All right, I, uh, just wanna introduce, this is John Osman from Austin's, Osman Business Strategy. Uh, I was very fortunate as a new fire chief to come in and have this set up for me before I even got here. So the taxpayers were gracious enough to put some money aside to have us go through this process, and basically, uh, it was, it was a great opportunity for me, being new, to come in and, and get a broad look at the Fire Department, our history, uh, you know, and, and kinda map out our future for the next four or five years. So, uh, it was great, not only in that sense, but also had a lot of meetings with many of the, the members of the department, both big meetings and small individual meetings as we narrowed things down and got to know people, uh, sit down and, and really get to hear what people were thinking about, and it was, uh, it was a great opportunity, and I feel fortunate to have had the, the chance to do so, so...
Well, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you for being here.
My pleasure. First of all, I wanna say that I've done several of these as a sort of a, not, I don't wanna say it's a sidelight, but my normal business is helping for-profit businesses go from good to great, or fix them if they're in trouble and that sort of thing. But, uh, as a, uh, started very small. I'm, I'm from Orleans, and the police chief wanted me to help him do a strategic plan some years ago, and that, from there, it started to become Fire Departments, Police Departments, and has just sort of ballooned. But I have to say, and the reason I say that is that, um, the experience this past summer with the chief and Deputy Sawyer and the, uh, the rest of the team was one of the best experiences, I have to say, that I've had in doing planning and just working with a great group of people. And, uh, there were a lot of challenges, and, uh, but the enthusiasm for wanting to come together in an organized way and move forward was, uh, just amazing to me, and it was just such a pleasure. So I just wanted to say that upfront. So instead of going through all 80 pages, which we won't do, uh, I have a couple of slides here that gives you a sort of a treetop view of, uh, what we were up to this summer with the, um, Yarmouth Fire Department. So, um, you know, why does anybody wanna have a strategic plan? And for the Yarmouth Fire Department, the department had not previously engaged in this process. And it's a process, not an event, and it's not just a report. It's a, uh, way of looking at your organization as a business. You know, a church is a business, a synagogue is a business, uh, a fire department is a business, your home is a business. And we were looking at it in a different way. So part of what I do is I bring in sort of the private industry understanding of how to run business and bring it to the, um, public space.
John, before you do any, pull the microphone a little closer.
Can you hear me better that way? Sorry. Okay, thanks. So anyway, uh, the Yarmouth Fire Department had not previously engaged in this process before, so this was a new way of, um, looking at themselves. And part of this process involves really sort of taking yourself apart and putting yourself back together again. And so you'll see that as we go through this. So, uh, but the most important part of this is the commitment on the part of the leadership team and everyone else is to embark on a unifying process that would chart a new course for the department over the next, uh, five years, and bring the team together in full participation. And the important word is ownership. Everybody owns this because they were all in it. They all agreed to it, and they said, this is what we wanna do. This is the chart, uh, this is the course we wanna chart, uh, going forward. And it was a great opportunity with, uh, a new chief to come in and go through this with them, uh, together. So just to go through a little bit of the process we went through, back in April, we had the initial meeting with the, the chief and the senior team to review the process and the timeline. So here's what you're gonna get yourself into, so here's how to prepare yourself. Uh, in early June 2023, we had a confidential SWAT analysis. SWAT is Strengths We... SWOT is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. This is how, a method for sort of understanding an organization from its constituents, meaning that they tell you what works, strengths, what you challenge with, or what doesn't work, weaknesses, things that are coming at you in the future that are opportunities, and threats or challenges to your organization going forward. So what we did is we did a confidential SWOT analysis with the department personnel via email. In other words, they all, I sent out a, basically a questionnaire, they sent their input to me, independent of anyone else. I consolidate all that and everything disappears, so no one knows who said what, and that's what's important, that they trust the process. And we get very good, raw, blunt, but accurate information. So we did that in early June, and beginning on June 22nd, we had our first full department meeting where we went through the strategic planning process, so I could sort of train them to see what, over the next several weeks and months, was going to happen to them. We reviewed with them, basically, the verbatim SWOT. I took the liberty of consolidating a lot of duplicate information, but basically pulled together the whole department input into, basically, verbatim what they said, so they really saw what they were saying. And then from that, we discussed the mission, which is what, who they are, what their identity is, what they do for a living, a description of that, core values, how they do, what they do, and how they feel about themselves, and a vision for the future, which is, where do you want to be in this space five years from now? Where, where do you want the organization to be? What do you want to accomplish? So that's the kickoff. The following week, we had our second, second department meeting where we finalized the new mission and vision statements, so I took their input from the first meeting and the SWOT analysis, and developed a statement of who they are and a statement of where they want to go, and they have to approve all these things. We also finalized their core values and developed a set of strategic goals. So once you have a vision, a statement, and a strategic plan, the next thing is to develop five or six or seven strategic goals that are like pillars that hold the vision together. And after developing the strategic goals, we started to identify objectives for each one of the goals. So under each one of the goals is a set of objectives you have to meet in order to meet the goal. If you meet all the goals, you achieve the vision, and that's how a strategic plan works. So two full department meetings, back to back. Once we had the vision, strategic goals, and most of the objectives identified, then we broke down into small working groups. So what I do with these groups is, if you have five or six strategic goals, I take a meeting a week for five or six weeks, and each week we will work on a specific strategic goal to finalize the objectives and work on action plans and strategies. And that's the, really, the meat of the, of the report is, the 80 pages, is all action plans and strategies. So we met for six meetings, and each meeting was a different set of people depending upon what the goal was. So if one week the goal was facilities and equipment, we had a certain set of five or six or seven people. If we were talking about culture development or training and career development, we had a different set of five or six or seven people. Try to keep the group small, but each group was focused on a different goal. So we met for three weeks in July, three weeks in August, to develop the strategies and action plans. Then after Labor Day, we had a third and final full department meeting where we reviewed the entire strategic plan as a group, where we went from the vision to the strategic goals, to the objectives, to the strategies, to the action plans. So, long meeting, but they basically reviewed the whole plan, and they get to sign off on it. So this is the ownership piece. So then in the months of September and October, there's a lot of planned content where the chief writes a letter, I write a few pieces that go into it, we put together a graphic design and make it look like a real, live, public document, and you have what you have So just some quick metrics here. One vision, six strategic goals, 29 objectives, 60 strategies, and 183 action plans over the next five years, so there's a lot of work to do. So getting into it, and just to take some highlights from this 80-page document, this is the front cover, which is, each one of these is unique for any client I have, and the graphic designer we work with is, is pretty good at making these things look nice. But we take the pictures, we like to get a lot of action shots of, of the Yarmouth Fire Department in action, and so we put together a little montage for the front cover. But one of the processes we went through is, let's talk about a motto, or a slogan, or a tagline, and the group came up with "Our family serving your family." So if we want to use that in, you know, as part of a email title block or something like that, that's for the department to decide, but they wanted that to be their slogan. So in the first page, we get to the mission statement, core values and beliefs, and the vision statement, which really starts you off. The mission, again, being who they are and the job they do today. Core values and beliefs is how they do, what they do, how they feel about what they do. And the vision statement is the space they want to occupy when they get to the end of the plan. So briefly, in the table of contents, we have a message from the chief, an organizational overview showing a org chart, and also some statistics about the fire department and some of the history and that sort of thing. Planning process and implementation, this is where I go through what strategic planning is about, and in detail, how we built the plan. Then the acknowledgements are everyone who participated from the department in, in the assembly of the plan. You'll see a strategic plan format page, which shows how to read the plan. And then there's a matrix of goals and objectives, which we'll look at here in a second. And then we split up the rest of the plan into six sections. Each section is a strategic goal. So the first strategic goal is leadership and administration, second goal is people and culture, third goal is organization and staffing, fourth goal is professional and career development, fifth goal is facilities, equipment, and technology, and the sixth goal is community engagement and support. So every organization does this in a different way, very similar challenges and, and, and things to overcome going forward and the investments needed, but every one of these that I do is, is, is unique. I mean, it depends on the, the culture there and the culture that they want to have, and the, you know, specific needs of the community and the organization. So just to show you a couple of these sheets from the strategic plan, the first major part of the plan is showing this matrix. And what this matrix really is, is the framework of the plan. Having had the vision statement of the description of where they want to go in five years, then you take a look at the six goals, leadership and administration, people and culture, organization and staffing, professional and career development, facilities, equipment, and technology, and community engagement, and support. Then underneath each one of those goals are supporting objectives. Achieving these objectives gets you to achieve the goal. Again, achieving the goal gets you to achieving the vision. So, for example, in goal one, under a leadership and administration, one of the objectives, objectives is instituting the strategic planning process in the Yarmouth Fire Department. So not only just doing this plan, but then implementing the plan, reviewing the plan on an annual basis, and other action items like that. Objective two is nurture town hall, Yarmouth Fire Department management and union relationship, several action plans and strategies in there. Department meetings and communications, department processes and procedures, budgeting and funding, and address industry standards to improve operations. So underneath each one of these objectives are a series of pages in the report as to how we're going to do this, the actual action plans and strategies. Under goal two, people and culture, focus responsibility for managing department culture. Second objective is personnel recognition, third one is retention, third one is personnel recognition. Objective four is wellness and support programs, five is team building, and six is nurture tradition. In goal three, organization and staffing is a structure and accountability, organizational attractiveness and recruitment, attain vital staffing levels, and regionalization. Goal four is professional and career development, which, one of the objectives there is training. Second objective is career development, third is succession planning. Under goal five, sort of the nuts and bolts of any of these sorts of plans, is facilities, equipment, and technology. One objective there is to take a look at the fire stations, and there's a lot of information there about feasibility studies and needs assessments and that sort of thing. Objective two would be review of the equipment. Objective three is maintenance programs. Objective four is information technology, what we want to do with IT. And finally, in goal six, is community engagement support. The outward-looking goal is focus community engagement responsibilities. This is about teams. I hate to use the word committees, but teams are smaller and tighter and get things done. Objective two is public education. Objective three is communications. Objective four is community events. Five is regional engagement, and six is proactive public health. So there's a lot going on here, and really what a strategic plan does is take the whole of an organization, break it down into much smaller bits that you can look at and manage, and reassemble them in an organizational way that seems to make sense to the organization. So most of the pages in the report look a little bit like this. So a format review looks like the inset here, where you'll have the goal, you'll have the objective, you'll have the strategy, a target completion date, an active fiscal year, funding year, the set of action plans, the purpose for doing it, and measures of success. And in the corner, you'll see a picture of the chief and the deputy chief there, just as an example, but we have pictures of people who are responsible and their names. So everyone has a piece of this plan. So for example, and I won't go through every one of these, but goal one, this is the divider page, and this begins the leadership and administration portion of the plan, you'll have the six objectives we talked about, and under each objective, you may have one or two, or sometimes three or four strategies. Within each strategy is a set of action plans. So each strategy represents a page and a set of action plans. Goal two on people and culture, sometimes you'll have one strategy, sometimes you'll have four, like in personnel retention, pay and benefits, onboarding and orientation, off-duty department involvement, consider performance review program. It starts to get, you drill down and start to get very, very specific. Organization and staffing, we talk about evolving the organizational structure, focus and improve accountability. Recruitment, we talk a lot about staffing in here, about what we want, when we want it, what we need, and all of that. And regionalization, how we supply personnel to teams and take people from the region and use them locally here. Professional and career development, this is all about training, about trajectories or pathways of growth through the organization, a mentorship program, a succession plan, and addressing things like institutional vulnerability, when someone goes on vacation or someone retires, what happens? Because in many organizations, public and private, when someone retires, who fills that spot? So where's the Plan B? So we want to make sure that we go along and have a Plan B for just about every position within the organization, cross-training. Goal five is facilities and equipment and technology. We talk about fire statements and needs assessment, total facilities review, analysis, and feasibility. Equipment, funding strategies, eliminating surplus equipment, maintenance programs, and a section on IT. And then the last piece, the last section of the strategic plan, is community engagement and support, where we focus community engagement responsibilities. Formalized public information officer, the PIO position. Institute a community engagement team, public education, training modules, target community groups or safety education. In communications, this is where we talk about social media, website, media management, that sort of thing, a community calendar. Community events, expand participation in community events. Regional engagement, how we engage with the public outside of our area. And proactive public health, which is a paramedicine program, and talking about a automatic external defibrillator program. So there's a lot of material in here, and we covered it very quickly tonight without going into all the really, really, lots and lots of detail. But it's a deep and dense plan that everyone has bought into and feels that this represents their trajectory and their strategy going forward. So, take any questions?
Okay, thank you. This is probably one of the most detailed and, and, and really granular business plan I've ever seen. Extremely well done, extremely well written. Who's going to, Enrique, who's going to, who's going to run it? Who's going to beat the, the rest of the people over the head and shoulders to make sure these things get done? And lastly, I hope you still don't have that Pontiac floating around.
No, no. So, like John mentioned, it's definitely going to be a team effort, certainly something that I'm going to lead with the deputy, but as, as we look through this plan here, the goal really is to use those small groups that we formed during the strategic planning process, and then use those people to push those, those things forward. And a lot of it, obviously, coming in is, is we've already incorporated a lot of the things that we talk about or that you see in this plan. So it's, it's kind of an ongoing process. Some things, obviously, we have to wait and, and plan for and budget for, but whatever we can do now, we've already started on a lot of the things in here.
Yeah, and, and reading it, it doesn't look like a, a top-down. It, it really looks like you put people's pictures in there and individuals, so, so it's, it, it looks like you, you've got some good buy-in, which is extremely important.
Definitely, that's the hope.
And again, it, it sounds like you're moving forward with, with some of the things that you can do right now. I would certainly hope it never ends up on a shelf just to decorate a shelf.
Well, let me make a comment about that. And again, coming from the private sector, is, plans are all well and good, but implementation is everything. And so if you don't, if you don't, you don't want the plan to be a pretty-looking document sits on a shelf. You want it to be dog-eared and beat up, and, and you want to use it all the time. And this is why there's a follow-up that I do, that I'll be doing with the chief, at least once a year, to develop a scorecard, is how we're doing. What other things do you need? What other changes do we need to make as we go along? Because you, you set a plan, and the plan gets you started and gets you moving in the right direction, but things change as time goes on, you know, what other things, you know, can we do? But again, the most important part of the plan like this is having the teams to implement them and make it real. Because a plan is nice at the beginning, but it doesn't mean anything until, you know, in five years where you can say, yeah, we did all that. And so we'll be having a scorecard and keeping track and making sure that it drives along.
You're right, yeah, no, again, you're six months out, a year out, each six months, every year out, you need to update your SWOT, because it's, it's going to change, and some things are going to come through, and some, some problems are going to be bigger problems than you thought. And some of the things that you thought you could do well, you're not doing so well, and other things you, you find that you're doing really well. Now, again, it's, I'm, I'm very, very impressed with it. I, I did read all 80 pages of it. Took me a couple of days to get through it, but, you know, extremely well done.
Thank you. Dorcas?
I also agree, this is really a very detailed, well-organized plan. I read it, but I can't say that I've had time to study it. I mean, I'd really like to take a good look at it. The first thing that jumped out at me and that I liked the best was the pictures of all of those that it goes back to, and the fact that... all of those that it goes back to, and the fact that on, on these people that are basically owning that goal, it isn't every single one a picture of the chief. That, I thought, was very significant. And I can see that this could be a great morale booster for the staff. I think that this is, you know, a great way to start getting it from the ranks up, you know, that you have the involvement. I, I'm very pleased. But as I say, I'm also saying, I, I really haven't studied it, but from what I've seen, I like it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorcas. And Dan?
As has been said, this is really good work. You know, I think back to your interview and all of the candidates for chief, and the issues, the concerns that were raised in all of those questions are all here. You know, it's really remarkable that you've not only identified them, but you've laid out clear pathway to get there with action items. It's just a really, really good piece of work, and maybe that's the private sector's mentality. You know, we all say we want our government to act like a private business, but this is really, I am just so impressed with so many facets of this. I love the mentoring, love that. You've done such a good job yourself in career development that I trust that that's going to be a real strength that you bring to the department, and it's the one that we were really looking for, in terms of, you know, where do we go from here in terms of career development for the next group of officers that are going to come through? And you've really laid that out. It's really, really done well. But, you know, so much is in here, mentoring, the grant writing, you know, so much of this is money, right? And money is always tight in this town, and it's going to remain that way with the soaring project. But, you know, you're not just asking for money, you're also throwing out some ideas about where to find some money. You know, you guys are pretty good at getting grant funds.
They've done a very good job.
Yeah, you are, you know, and John, I think John Sawyer has done a really good job with that, and we need more of it, frankly, especially if we want to accomplish some of these things. But this is really fine work. The idea of the retention, so important, you know, we, we get our guys and we end up losing them simply because we can't pay them off, or maybe it's a morale issue, or frustration of one kind or another. But I'm glad that you identified it, because we really do want to keep these people and, and make them a family, you know? So I just, I can't praise this enough. Maybe this is what we needed, new blood, new energy to come in and really start right from the ground up. And you've done that with the help of this consultant, and I'm really looking forward to seeing some of these things take fruit. And it doesn't all have to happen in five years, but we are definitely going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the presentation. I'm just curious, how much are we talking about money-wise?
Which part?
All.
Yeah.
We have a plan here. We know we need to improve facilities, we need to improve training, we need to change staffing levels. We obviously have a timeframe here of several fiscal years, so, you know, as, as they used to say, you know, where's the beef? Where's the money? You know, what's the money piece of this thing? I, I love plans, but until you can identify how much money you need, we're not going to be able to get that far. So how much money do you need, and when do you need it?
Well, I think prioritizing our needs is key. I think staffing is probably the number-one item that's come out of this that leads to a lot of the other issues that we've had over the last 20 years. Having enough people, having the people in the right stations, and, and being able to do, meet a lot of these needs, I think is probably being identified as the number-one priority for us right now. And I think we've talked about it, obviously, we're, we're in budget season coming here, so you're going to see that that's a priority for us, is to, to get more staffing. And then, obviously, the facilities, I think at one point, we, we put up a slide, and I think, I said, I think that's a $100 million slide in itself, just in facilities. So, you know, two of the three fire stations are at, that need to be replaced. They're not meeting the needs of the community, and they're not, they're just not there for what we're trying to do, and certainly not for where we're trying to go. So, and the third fire station was never finished, so we have to come up with a plan with what we're going to do there. So there, there is a significant investment ahead of us in order to accomplish all of this.
Yeah, see, I, I look at this document as sort of a, sort of a roadmap to a plan. It sort of identifies all the key areas that we need to focus in on, and it basically gets everybody sort of on the same page on what it is we need to be working towards. But there are a lot of unknowns at this point, and I think the big thing is related to money, and then prioritizing. You've identified so many areas that need some attention. Now the question's going to be, in an environment where we're all living with limitations financially, the challenge is going to be, you know, how much and what areas do we tackle? And that itself, I think, also speaks to the need for an ongoing collaborative process as well. Because I think what you're trying to do is you're trying to get everybody to buy into this game plan and this sort of roadmap in developing a plan. This is a plan that's going to be developed more fully over time, but at least you've got the outlines of it, you've got the pieces of it, you've got some initial buy-in in terms of what's there. But the tough part is coming up next, really.
Yeah, definitely.
And I think, and I think, as far as, I think, you know, I, I think as a board member, I think one of the things that I would certainly appreciate it is that at key milestones, you know, we have a check-in with, with you, chief, and whoever else is part of this effort to, to work on this, where we can talk openly about, you know, how we're doing and, and how we're going, and what we're going to need to do financially. Because our problem has been in the past that the needs have been significant, but we have been financially pressed. We've had some difficulties financially. Yarmouth is a town that has, has had its financial challenges over many years, and quite frankly, we've had to make a lot of sacrifices. And now we're sort of at a point where the financial picture has improved due to an enormous amount of hard work by selectmen who have long since gone, and by managers and finance directors that have, also have left us. But we've been given a really good foundation financially, which I think puts us in a good position to make some, make some tough, make some tough decisions, but also have some resources to work with. So I think as a select board member, I see this as just the beginning. I see this as a roadmap to an overall plan where there's some key decisions that we need to make collectively. And I think part of this effort is going to require some regular interaction with the boards so that we can, because quite frankly, I, I, as, and I'm just speaking for myself, I'm very concerned about the staffing levels and burnout, all right? And we want to make the department, the fire department, a place where we're able to keep our troops, you know, refreshed. And that's an important component of this. And Yarmouth is not the only fire department that has seen a significant increase in call volume. We're seeing it in fire departments all across the Cape. And so how do we, in taking care of ours and our department, that, to me, would be an area that I would want to focus on right away. I'd want to focus on, you know, what kind of facility improvements can we make that can make at least, rather than the big buildings just yet, I mean, because that takes a lot of time and energy, but are there facility improvements that we can make in the short term that improve quality of life, that improve efficiency in terms of operations? So I think, like I said, I think this is a start. It's a good start. It's a good framework. It's sort of a roadmap to getting to a plan, but there's an enormous amount of work that still has to be done. And, you know, I, I expect to see you and, and you, you back here on a regular basis to kind of work with us in terms of how we sort of add more flesh and more meat and more substance to each of these items, particularly on the staffing levels.
No, I appreciate that. I think the, the key thing is, I'd be happy to, to report back as often as I can, and I think the big part not only is the buy-in now, but them seeing a commitment and fulfillment of some of these goals. Because I think there's been other staffing studies, there's been other needs assessments, and then they've done exactly that. They, they've sat on the shelf, so.
Yeah, and I, and I think, quite frankly, I think that, that's, we, we owe it, you know, to, to the department and to the, to the men and women that serve in our community and put their lives on the line, is to sort of lay out a clear vision in terms of how we're going to meet some of these needs. I think that's something that's been lacking, but we're at a point where we really have to address that. You know, I think the thing that I've learned just over the process over the past year or so, in terms of, you know, the hiring process for a new chief, has been, you know, we've had the opportunity to learn a lot about our fire department. And I think one of the things that I've picked up is, there's, at least what we've, what I've observed is truly a commitment on the part of those that serve in our fire department to really help make it better and help it stronger. And I think people have basically bought into the idea of helping in, in whatever ways they can to make it a stronger, better department. So I think, I think the kind of culture that you're trying to, to sort of strengthen and create, I think, is, is admirable, and I think, at least from what we've seen, the odds of success are reasonably high. But for this to work, we, we as a board need to step up, and we need to come to town meeting with some, some resources to help implement these recommendations. Because if we don't do that, if we don't deliver, if we can't figure out a way to make this work, then it's going to make your job a lot more difficult. So we've got, we're all in this together, as they say. And I'm anxious to see some of the, the recommendations regarding money, particularly on staffing and facilities, particularly in the short term, long term, and also the training. We have a lot of, we have a lot of folks that have bought into the, the need for that and the desire for that, and I think that's terrific. So, you know, sign me up, I'm, I'm ready for that. And I think, Mr. Chairman, I think this is something that we just have to stay on top of as a board, and I would encourage the chief and the manager to come back on a regular basis to see, to see, you know, what we can do collectively to implement the key, all of this. But obviously, there are going to be some important priorities that come up very, very soon that we've got to tackle.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Just a couple of brief things. First of all, thank you very much for the presentation. It was very enlightening and well, well-conceived. I think what Mark's talking about is frankly very important, where we go from the area of conceptualization and organization and planning to implementation. And the implementation is going to be inextricably related to funding and financing and, and getting community support and political support for funds, for facilities, and for training and things of that nature. The other comment I, I'd like to make is that I'm glad that you talked about looking at this plan on an annual basis to see, you know, what you have accomplished, where you have come up short, what modifications you might have to make, given circumstances that are beyond our control, financial circumstances, health things like COVID, you know, these things that come out of left field that can disturb the, as they say, the best-laid plans of mice and men. So that, that makes it an organic document, that makes it something that's going to be viable. And, you know, we do goal-setting sessions every year, and I, I can't think of a year where we go down and say, okay, we had, you know, eight goals and we accomplished all of them. I mean, that's not really the real world, because other things come up and other challenges present themselves. And things that you've relied on that perhaps could have been promised to you, or assurances that were made, don't, don't come to fruition. And you have to kind of go back to, like, we're dealing with wastewater, you know? Everybody thought when we went to town meeting, we got the vote, we got the state revolving fund. Now DEP has given us all kinds of hassles about implementation, which can cause delay and delay, and a big project can cost a lot of money. And so those are, those are the practical realities of, of town government. But I think what, you know, Mark's advice is, is, is well-taken, that if we have periodic updates and reviews, and we can see what's happening within the department. And we all got a, I think, a, a good flavor of the department in the hiring process of the chief. We've, we've learned an awful lot from the consultants, from the candidates, from the input of our town administrator, from formulating the questions. And I think, I think things, I think there's a bright future here for, for the fire department, certainly, under, under the chief's leadership. I really, I truly do. But there are these practical obstacles or challenges that are going to be coming upon us from time to time, and I think we're better able to address them if we're updated periodically as to how things are going within the department. But those are, the other thing I just want to say is, I think it was in goal four, where you had a, a goal of mentoring and succession planning. That was a big thing for us with getting a new, a new chief and, and the, you know, developing a culture of succession within the fire department. I think that's critically important, and I'm glad to see that, that's, that's in your goals as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I might also comment, I didn't, you're coming up with the slogan of "our family serving your family." I think you really hit it well there. There is such a culture within the fire department of family, you know, when you're working 24/7. And I think that just kind of brings you on a personal level to the folks in town. I like it a lot.
Yeah, thank you. Now, we, we went through a lot of different versions of, of some, and I'll make, I'll make one of our guys really happy that we, we came, it was Yarmouth Emergency Services was one, which the initials are obviously Y E S, which is yes, you know, that will do anything, basically. And we went through a lot of iterations of it, but coming together at the end, you know, we talked about pride and integrity and, and vision and all those things, but what it came down to is, you know, we're a family, and, and we want to work together to, to continue to serve that way.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You good? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, speaking of problems with wastewater, I look out at the vast audience here, and I see Jeff Colby just waiting to brief us on drinking water, state revolving fund, request for funding for PFAS planning. So this has nothing to do with the wastewater treatment facility or anything like that. It's the availability of funds for PFAS at the planning stage, correct?
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. This is really a pretty straightforward request. We're not asking for new funding. This is a project that's already been approved previously through, through the board and town meeting. But recently, state revolving funds have been made available for PFAS planning and design, which previously was only construction-related services. So this is a good thing. There's debt forgiveness associated with PFAS monies, as well as in wastewater for construction. And so this authorization, if the board takes this up and authorizes the town administrator to file the SRF application for this particular project, not only allows us to have a low-interest loan authorization, which does save the town significant funds, but also some debt forgiveness associated with PFAS. So it's an ongoing project that we've recently initiated for looking at long-term treatment. Many of you went out and took a look at the wells four and five and the treatment that's going on there, and will be online shortly. But this is the next step that was approved so that we could look at, you know, how are we going to address, you know, well number 10, and where PFAS might be appearing in some other wells as well? Is there an ability to take, so a little, you know, snippet of where kind of we're going is, is there an ability to take wells offline? Do we need to just treat seasonally? Do we need a, a long-term permit location? So that's really what the study's doing, and they're in the midst of it right now. doing. And they're in the midst of it right now. But what we are looking to have the board authorize is just to go into the SRF program for this ongoing project to, you know, potentially get us some, some money back and, and relief from some of that expense. And with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have on this.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. I, I guess the long and short of it is that these funds, I guess the eligibility for the funding's been expanded to the planning stage and not just limited to construction. That's the real impetus of this. Am I correct?
That's correct. And the board hasn't previously authorized us to file the application, which is why we're here tonight.
Okay. Any questions, Mark?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Jeff, in terms of wording the, the board's motion, can we just sort of, can one member just move to approve authorizing the town administrator to file the application on the town's behalf as indicated on the attached authority to file? Or do we need to read the whole resolution?
I think it would be fine if you were just to authorize.
Make the motion to authorize. Okay.
Absolutely, yes.
That's my only question. I think it's great that you folks are pursuing added funding. So.
Yeah, and if we could get some loan forgiveness out of that, that'd be
Yeah, better.
Perfect. But even if we don't, we get the preferred interest rate, that's going to be helpful, too.
Absolutely.
Dan?
No questions.
Dorcas?
No questions.
Peter Q?
No, no questions.
Mr. Chairman, then I'd like to move to author, to approve an authorization for the town administrator to file the SRF application on the town's behalf to fund PFAS planning as indicated on the attached authority to file resolution.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming out, Jeff.
Thank you.
We have a lot of minutes. So let's start with, let me dig them out, January 12, 2023.
Motion to approve January 12.
I'm sorry, was it 22?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, it says here, though, on the
It is 23. That 22 is wrong.
Is it 22 wrong?
This is about the fire chief process.
Right.
So.
Yeah, because in the lower right-hand corner, it says January 12, 2023.
All right. So that needs to be corrected. So I move
You don't have to redo these, right? We can just change it on the top.
As amended.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move to approve as amended the January 12, 2023 minutes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? And just note for the record that there was an erroneous date on the top saying January 12, 2022. But in the lower right-hand corner, and on each page in the lower right-hand corner, those minutes did have the correct date of January 12, 2023.
As well as the agenda.
Right.
As well as the agenda. Okay?
Yeah.
So we did that one.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes for our meeting on March 7, 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes of March 7, 2023, and a second by Dorcas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So those are unanimously approved.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move to approve the March 28, 2023 minutes of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the March 28, 2023 minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
I abstain on that.
We have one abstention, four in favor.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve the meeting minutes of our meeting on October 17, 2023.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
I abstain on that one. I was
And one abstention on the, so four in favor, one abstention on October 17 minutes.
And, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the board's meeting minutes of November 7, 2023.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve November 7, 2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
One, one abstention. I was
One abstention. So that passes. We have four in favor, zero against, and one abstention. So upcoming agenda review. Next, one's going to be December 5. We have a retirement recognition of Jane Fogarty. We have a hearing amendments to entertainment license for Thatcher Hall. They've been in several times trying to iron, iron things out there. Anything else you got in mind on this one, Bob? On the 5th, that you can think of?
No.
Okay.
Can I make a pitch, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, absolutely.
I think it would be helpful on the 5th to get an update on the, on a number of items. And one would be an update on the Solar Wolf resolution of that whole problem. It seems like there's some progress that's been made. And I think it would be helpful for, you know, us to zero in on the overall plan and how that's working out. So I'd like to make a pitch for that. I'd like to make a pitch for the board getting the housing production plan to come back before the board, as we've recommended some changes, but we haven't seen anything yet. So hopefully, we can get the revised housing production plan before the board and we can see the changes and finally get that approval out of the way. I know, going through the process, there's an open space and recreation plan. And I think, that's actually something that I think we need to see soon. I'm not sure the 5th is the date or it makes sense. But I think in December, we should get a good look at it and get a good deep dive on it, because we're going to have to approve that plan. So an enormous amount of work has been done by, you know, town staff and open space and recreation. So I think we've got to put that on our list of things to do. And I think in December, we need to talk about wastewater and just get an update on how things are going there, particularly with DEP. I'm very pleased to hear that DEP has approved and given the green light on the sewer contracts. I think that's terrific.
But not all the contracts.
Huh?
But not all the contracts.
Correct. Only two in right now, so.
So I think we need a wastewater discussion sometime in December.
But you're right on that, Peter. I think there's three more contracts to go.
Right. So, and we have some snags there that we should talk about. We're not alone. There are other towns that are facing the same kind of problems that we've been, there are the same roadblocks or speed bumps that we've been hit with. So we should probably talk about that. So those are some items that I think are appropriate for the month of December that I'd like to pitch to the board.
Then on the 19th, we're going to have a, tentatively, we're going to have a hearing on pizza by Evan. I'm assuming it's alcohol, but council committee on the 19th and a bylaw review committee legislative delegation update.
Mr. Chairman, if I might also, one thing I'm beginning to get a feel, some, some interest in the community regarding is the Matta Key Committee.
Committee, yeah.
I think we need to look at that.
I agree.
And in conjunction with that, is Emmy Small scheduled to close? And when is that going to close? Because that's really going to fall into Matta Keys.
I haven't heard that that's scheduled to close. Has anybody, Bob, have you ever heard anything?
Not scheduled to close. And I think what the key issue is, is that the school department officials are making a major pitch to the school building assistance to try to get that project moved up so that they can begin to plan for the next iteration for, for a school there. But, but that, that's what, what the issue is. So, but I, I think that, you know, that, that discussion might be a great one to have while we're talking about the Matta Keys and the direction there, because the, the two sites are inextricably linked.
I agree.
And, and it's, you know, more than likely going to be the synergy between those sites that open up the opportunities that we have as a community to really maximize what's going on out there and take care of the school needs, town needs, and, and deal with the older facilities.
Isn't there like a general policy with the state that if you have, if you've received funding for a school, you're supposed to wait so many years before you become eligible for another school?
I don't know if there's a hard and fast number of years you're supposed to wait. But clearly, having the intermediate school be the central focus there, that, I, you know, there's no question that slowed down the Margaret Small School.
Yeah.
Especially given the deficiencies that are around there.
Check with the superintendent. I thought there was some kind of, like you said, I think there's ways of getting projects advanced if they're kind of in critical need, so to speak. But I think there's, I think there is a rule of thumb that, you know, kind of puts us not in the best light, because we just had a school built.
No, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. There is, and I, and I, but I also agree with the administrator. I don't think it's a hard and fast rule, but it's basically been a practice that if you've been at the well, they, they like to spread the wealth and move the money around. The problem is
So maybe we could find out, you know, what the dynamics are there, if there is such a rule, what the school committee's doing about that, what their game plan is. Are they trying to accelerate it?
I can also add that, as, as Bob has mentioned, the, in my discussions with legislators on the Small School, they're, they're all making it a priority. They have all gone to, you know, they've brought folks here. They've said, listen, we've got to make this a priority. We've got to elevate it. So they've been putting some real skin in the game and trying to get the state to really prioritize that. So they've been working pretty hard on it. I get the impression that they seem somewhat encouraged
Yeah.
by the feedback. Yeah. So I, did it say legislative update on our, on our, I mean, I think that's
19.
Yeah. So I think, yeah, I think that's, if, if we're having a meeting with our legislative delegation on December 19, that's an excellent item to put on our list of things to talk to them about, is how are they doing in helping elevate that project? Because I think they've let you know that, Bob. They've let me know that. I think they may have let some other folks know.
I hearken back to Carol Woodbury's words. I remember her saying that if she had it to do over again, she would have probably placed Small ahead of Matta Keys in terms of need because of its condition. It's really in bad shape.
It has something to do with the fact that school building doesn't usually do renovations or additions.
Right, yeah.
They do whole buildings.
And they, at the time, they preferred regional projects. And that was not a regional project.
Yeah.
So you have to kind of play out those dynamics, too.
Mr. Chairman, if we're going to be talking about education issues, would it be possible to ask the superintendent to come and meet with us? We, we have not formally met with the new superintendent yet.
He just came in and kind of introduced himself at one meeting.
Yeah, kind of one of those drop the parachute in, parachute out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gave his, his genealogical link back to the Mayflower. I was kidding him about that. He was saying, you know, how many generations he had lived in Orleans and what certain ancestors had done. I said, why don't you just cut to the chase and tell us about the Mayflower? But
I think that's a great idea. And I'd also add to the list of things, because this is, this, this really drove me crazy, was the AV problems at the, at the new school. I mean,
Absolutely.
Here we are showcasing, there were a ton of people there that came to that building into our town meeting, not just to participate in town meeting, but also to see the new facility and to see what it was like.
The numbers were up from what we normally get.
And then to have the, all the AV problems at the school and to have all the, I mean, it really was, it was kind of embarrassing, quite frankly. I, I would love to get an update on their AV problems, because we don't want to have another town meeting where we had to scramble quickly at the last minute to even have some
Yeah.
You know? That, that was, that was really a poor production. And, and for them not to have adequate staff there to support what we're trying to do.
Spacing on the stage. They got to, we got to do something better than that. I mean, you couldn't even see down the line. And it was awfully congested, you know?
Yeah.
Like I said to Bob, perhaps in a, in a moment of frustration, I said, I'd rather be back at Matta Keys than this. But from the audience's standpoint, it was beautiful. I mean, the seats were spacious and teared.
The seats were comfortable, right. But, you know, to talk about AV, we were in the dark. People could not see us really on the stage.
Correct.
Because the lighting was so poor.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, there are a lot of things that need to be fixed. The AV, the lighting, obviously. I mean, the list is fairly long, I think. And, and one of the AV issues that created a real problem is, is for the folks at home that were watching,
Yeah.
they couldn't hear much of what we were saying. So there was also a TV problem. This isn't the first time we've had a TV problem also. I mean, the TV issues have been, I mean, they've been with us for years. You know, so, yeah, it was kind of like deja vu all over again, you know, at our special town meeting.
We've talked about the fact that we don't have the media access that we used to have with newspaper coverage and things like that. And so it's, it's all the more important that the things that we do have function properly.
Exactly.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I had interesting feedback from folks about where the microphones were placed.
Uh huh.
There were a number of, like, if you think about Matta Key, we always had the ones down front and the ones up in the back. But there were no up in the back microphones this time.
That was because of these technical problems. They had to bring them down.
Right. So that, and the other is, if, if you look at that, that room, what was happening was that everybody was moving down front for the ones that got there first thing. And then as people came in later, they were being seated in the upper area. And I, I personally watched some people struggling on those stairs to go up to those seats. So I think we also need to look at reserving an area for anyone that may have any disabilities and access issues, so that that kind of thing doesn't happen. But some people were saying, oh, I had to walk so far to get to the microphone to talk.
Well, again, I think that was related to the, the screw-ups at the school, on the school's end. Right. I think, I think generally what we've been able to do is when we can get in and have an adequately functioning building, we've done a pretty good job in making sure that everything
My understanding is that they did have two dry runs with the IT and everything went fine, right?
Everything was beautiful. And, and I, I really have to hand it to our IT folks. And they had quite a team. And, and I think that, you know, a lot of that is what made up for some of the shortcomings on the, on the staffing that was there to get it sort of, not rectified, but at least taken care of so quickly so we were able to call the meeting to order. But, yeah, they, they had two separate dress rehearsals with all of the, the AV stuff, because it was more complicated. But it, it was kind of interesting. It worked out. A lot of the equipment, they don't even have on and off switches. It, it's all computer, you know, through the cloud and, and applications. And I guess what happened was they had a complete shutdown of their network and they couldn't even get the screen, you know, to, to retract or un-retract.
Is it also true, Bob, that they didn't have staff to help provide support, any technical support? They were gone?
Well, there was a consultant, I think, that they were relying on that, that, so it's not in-house staff, but they have a technical consultant that's still responsible for the AV system that was not on site. He was on site. I met him when we went to our initial meeting. He was on site, had things squared away. But at the, the night of the meeting, he was not there. And so that, you know, that a lot of people had their telephones out and
Yeah, so we had trouble getting that person engaged, right?
Right. And, you know, the staff was great at the, at the school. But, you know, the, the system, it's a very technical system. And they had a technical consultant that I, I think the school staff relied upon as well. And I think everyone was shocked when, you know, we got there at 4 o'clock and, and the systems wouldn't you know, we got there at four o'clock and, and the systems wouldn't power up.
It's awful.
Anybody else on agenda? I'm sure other matters will come up that we'll be talking about for the next two meetings. Going to bring us through the, is that our last one this year, the 19th?
Yes.
That's it?
Right. A couple, a couple of things.
Yeah.
Somewhere on the line, and probably into next year, I think we should talk about putting in places so people can plug in their electric cars. And maybe we get a commercial customer, customer to come in to put, put the machinery in, and then we collect a little bit off the top to cover it, you know, maybe, maybe at the beaches, maybe here. And also, and this is definitely for next year, our, our elections are in, are in May.
Mm-hmm.
Why don't we move them to November, when everybody else has their election? And I think we would get a big, bigger turnout. Again, something for the, something for the agenda.
Well, the November elections are typically set for cities. Towns, basically by law, have their elections set in a different timeframe.
It, it, it's required to have them at a different time?
You'll see that the cities, if your population, yeah, there's some state law governing all this. It might be worth at least asking, maybe in an upcoming administrator's report, maybe, or where the town clerk comes in to kind of explain how that process works. Because I know Barnstable, they have their elections in November of the council. But I would challenge anyone to suggest that the turnout is good. The turnout there was around 12 percent.
Yeah.
Which is kind of where we've been.
Yeah.
All right. So the only way that changes is if you're having your municipal elections on, on an even-numbered year. And you want to be careful about, you know, limiting yourself just to even-numbered years to get. So there's a, there's a lot to this equation that would need to be looked at because limiting your elections to an even-numbered year creates a bit of a problem in terms of how you stagger your terms. So you'd have one group of select board members elected on odd years with a percentage, the turnout is 12 percent. And then on the even-numbered years, there'll be other members elected when the turnout is maybe closer to 70 or 80 percent. So, you know, you really have to, that's why in many cases, many municipalities will just, particularly the towns, will stick to that timeframe. And I think in the Barnstable council, the entire council was up, and it may very well have been that it was picked for an odd-numbered year for that purpose, to have exclusively a municipal election. But as you can see, being in November didn't help them any because it was kept, it was, you know, a 12 percent turnout.
Right. I was, I was, this is about communication. I was cruising in a town next to us, that would be the town of Barnstable, and at a number of their trailheads, they've got a thing that you can download their website and stuff and get updates, which is actually quite cool. And I'll show it to the town manager, because I think that's something that we might want to do, and it's, it's little money and a great way for additional communication. It's just, you know, it's just, it's just a barcode to, to take, and it automatically downloads, downloads a bunch of information as to trails and what's going on in town and meetings and so on and so forth.
Yeah, I, I think that's a neat idea, but that actually requires, you know, building up your own capability for that. I mean, I think that's a huge opportunity for the town in terms of helping people navigate historic sites, historic areas. You can do apps that are unique to our beaches. You could do apps that are also unique to other aspects of the town. Discover Yarmouth. And then you could have all sorts of information on it. But that's a project that needs to be scoped out and budgeted. It's not, it's not like you can just tell, you know, the IT director, hey-
Yeah, we've, we've got it.
This overnight.
We hired a communications director and that, you know, something to, something to maybe put in the quiver to be done later.
Well, I think, you know, again, I, I don't know if going back and forth makes, but that's the kind of, that's the reason why you draft a communications plan, is because what's going to happen is, is you're going to have all these ideas and all these thoughts, and the idea is to work from one plan. And I think that certainly is, I think, is a helpful suggestion. But you can do these on a project-by-project basis. So for example, when you're developing your open space and recreation plan, there are probably features of our recreation areas that we might want to have, you know, you might want to have an area there. The barcode thing, I know it's very, very popular, but I'd be interested to see how much use it actually gets. Because, I don't know about you, but every time I see those barcodes, you know, you know, I've tried to scan it, and, you know, I've had, I've had no success whatsoever, so.
Well, you, you get away from using a rotary phone.
Is that, is that what this is? Is that what that is? That's the rotary phone?
Rotary phone. They used to make a lot less mistakes dialing them than I do with these.
You can hear people a lot more clearly, too, I think.
All right, let's move on. Individual items. Mark.
Individual items. No, I just, I would like to just, again, I, I'm excited that we've got some contracts approved from DEP, and I think we need more work to do. Maybe we need to put this on an agenda in the future, but I think it would be a great idea to write a letter to Secretary Augustus and the governor, because obviously, this came up as a talking point when, when the governor came to visit us. And we made sure the governor was aware that the board was concerned about the delays. She was not happy about it, and she asked for some follow-up by the Secretary of Housing. He got some information from me, and I think we may want to at least send a thank you note. I've certainly thanked the Secretary of Housing for helping us out on getting that approved. So just something to think about.
I think Chris is going to try to set up some meetings with DOT and DEP.
Chris who?
Chris Flanagan has been, you know, he received the letter from the selectmen as well, and is also aware of the other, you know, Cape Town's undergoing similar problems with groundwater discharge.
Mm-hmm.
And so he's working on setting up some meetings there with, including EEA, and also on the DOT timing and the issues associated with the restoration of 28. I think that those could be helpful as well.
Huh. Is there any objection to having a letter go to Secretary Augustus saying thanks for weighing in on our behalf?
Absolutely not. Absolutely.
No, but I think the letter should also, you know, be encouraging him to continue to assist us in implementing our plan going forward.
That doesn't bother me at all. I mean, I've worked with him before.
Say that, you know-
No, I have a relationship with-
Based on your cooperation, you know, we're sure, you know, we're confident that you're going to help us going forward to implement this critical environmental initiative.
Yeah. Well, I, I look forward to, yeah, I mean, I think if we could do something like that, if we can authorize the administrator to do something on our behalf.
I still want him to think he's off the hook entirely.
No, no. I, I used to work with him in a different capacity, yeah. While, when I worked for Congressman Delahunt, he worked for Congressman McGovern. So we've crossed paths on numerous occasions. And he was more than happy to lend a hand and work with us on it. I'm interested in what Chris Flanagan's doing because, you know, I've heard from several towns myself about needing help and needing, we need to work as a region in dealing with this discharge permit issue because the same standards that are being applied to us are being applied to a lot of other folks. And they have approved discharge permits in other communities that, that have, let's put it this way, different situations, a different situation than ours. So we're, we're being held to a new standard here. And we're not getting the kind of relief that other communities have. And again, if the governor's office is interested in seeing us make progress on affordable housing, we need wastewater infrastructure to support it. And the reality is, we also have our own deadlines. I mean, we're on, we, we have an SRF deadline, and we're at number one on the list, and we only have so many months to be able to do what we need to do in order to secure those funds. So the clock is running on us. So I'm glad there are others that are interested in it.
Funds that'll be running for some real money.
Yeah, that's exactly it. So I'm interested in learning more about what, what Representative Flanagan might be doing, because time is of the essence here.
Hey, Dan.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Focus.
I'm fine.
Peter.
I'm fine.
Okay. Then we will proceed to the consent agenda.
I, I have no problem with anything in the consent agenda, but I'd like a little more explanation of the bridge.
All right, I can jump in there a little bit. The, the first issue is that the, the agreement, this is for a right-of-entry agreement, so it's not a taking. They're asking permission to enter, you know, around the town's property so they can construct the bridge project. Now, a big piece of this is that the town needs to sign off on damages for the right of entry, and we've been pushing this right along. And so what essentially this does is it has the board of selectmen approve, sign off to construct the bridge project and allow the right of entry without damages. So it's, it's pretty standard. It's something we have been anticipating. The DBW's been all over it, and the, you know, their recommendation is that there aren't really damages associated with it. Improvement.
No concerns about the Pecan Landing area as far as damage?
No, none of that.
Okay, you have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? unanimous, Lee. Town administrator updates, I guess, is the last remaining item.
Okay, well, we've already had a lot of discussion on our big news of the night that we have received the Mass DEP approval for Contracts Two and Contracts Three, which takes us east of the Parkers River. Those two contracts are just under 40 million. So that, that's a big, that's a big push. And I know we've talked about that a great deal, but we still have a fabulous amount of work still to go on achieving a discharge permit. So that process is ongoing. We have met with DEP officials. So the idea, you know, they have been communicative with the town. The, the problem is, is the standards that they've adopted, which in my view, you know, are not specifically covered under their regulations. It's, it's just sort of a, an undocumented rule of thumb that limits any impacts to groundwater levels, despite the fact that we've already lowered the groundwater level by removing all of the water, you know, pumping from the town's wells. But that's a critical issue, and, and they have specifically requested that the town provide a great deal of additional information in terms of an analysis of some potential alternative discharge sites. And we're ongoing with that analysis, but, you know, I, I do have a fear that if we try to decentralize the discharge to a great extent, that in and of itself could significantly impact the budget regarding the discharge. So we're not out of the woods yet, but by the same token, I think that the one thing that the DEP deserves, that they've asked for us to analyze the potential of other sites, which, you know, our hope is if we continue this process that we're going through and the communication that can show the alternatives may not be as feasible, which would hopefully lead to a decision on the application that we've initially submitted. And, and I think that, you know, that they indicated strongly to us that part of the process is, they feel that the town needs to do more due diligence to prove that the impacts from the application we've submitted are the most advantageous proposal. So we've got a little work to do, they've got a little work to do, but this is going to be a major emphasis. And I just want, you know, you folks know, as far as our team goes, you know, we've got the, in addition to the, all of the town staff engaged on this, the OPM, Wright Pierce, really pushing on CDM. So, I mean, the number of engineers that are working on this should be sufficient to develop some more information to DEP. And if we continue the communication around it, we're hoping to, to show some progress in time to make the SRF funding. But certainly, this action tonight prevents us from canceling those two contracts and rebidding those, which we felt, you know, could cost the town millions in terms of just escalation on those costs. So some good news there.
You just got that last night, right?
Yes, just, it just came in last night.
What is the deadline on the SRF for the?
Well, the, their original deadline is we're supposed to have contracts issued by June 30, 2024. Now, we may be eligible to have an extension through to October, but that's our deadline.
Okay.
And, and we don't want to have to refile with the SRF program, you know, that would be very disadvantageous.
This reminds me a lot of the DHY problem, all right? You know, study, 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 and, and, you know, costs keep going up and up and up. That's why I think we need to look at the alternative and look at other programs. At the same time, we're going to have to join up with the other towns to put some real pressure on DEP to be realistic. What they're asking for in terms of impacts is just totally unrealistic. You know, it's almost as if they want you to discharge without having any impact to water at all. And that's just ridiculous. There'll be some elevation, but I think their, their guidelines suggest it's only like an inch of an increase, which is just totally ridiculous, you know? And they have approved other discharge permits that can't meet that threshold. So clearly, something's going on within the agency. And, you know, my hope is that, you know, with the legislators helping us out and us banding together with the other towns, we can get them to, you know, be more realistic while we're looking at these other options. Again, what they're doing, DEP, the state of Massachusetts is the one that's holding us up from implementing at a fairly brisk pace this wastewater plan. Before, it was inertia from a neighboring town or two. And now what we have is we've got the state getting in our way. And the reality is that unless they start becoming more cooperative, you know, we as a board are going to have to deal with added costs and missing, you know, we're going to be asked, why are you missing the delays? Or why are you missing the schedules?
Yeah.
You know, you told us you were going to start it on such and such date, and then you haven't done it. Now you're coming back for more money, you know? And so I think it's important for us in terms of communicating with our own people, you know, where these delays are coming from and why they're, you know, why they've become a real problem. To let people know, but we also need to be aggressive in forcing DEP to be somebody realistic with us. And the other case, we're not alone, all right? You've got Mashpee, Falmouth, Barnstable in the same, you have Barnstable, Mashpee, Falmouth, Dennis, Harwich, all in the same boat. All right? They're prob, and in the towns that are close to us in terms of advancing projects, they're getting slowed down, too. Barnstable's been delayed on their discharge permit for, God, it seems like forever. Mashpee, they're not going anywhere with their project. So we're not, we're not alone. We're, we're being held up with other towns to a standard that is in my, in my, I'm not a hydrologist, but it seems to be excessive. We're not going to be doing an outfall here. That's, if, if that's what they're trying to push us into, that's just not going to happen. I don't see people here in the mid-Cape suggesting us a go to that alternative. But in some cases, that's, you know, there are those that believe, believe it or not, there are those that believe that's the best place. There are those that are in the regulatory community that believe that's the best way to discharge wastewater. So that may be part of the internal regulatory politics that we're fighting. So, like I said, these, these, these issues need to come to a head, and we got to get them resolved soon. Otherwise, we're going to lose a lot of money.
So that's a critical piece. I also wanted to give the board just a little bit of update that we're doing a tremendous amount of work organizationally with our department heads and other staff members, internalizing the board of selectmen's goals and priorities. And we just had a great meeting of the department heads today and were- And, uh, we just had a great meeting of the department heads, uh, today, and we're working on a process that, that we've got team members that are, uh, setting forth the key milestones in the departments toward achieving the overall goals established by the Board of Selectmen. And, and we're also working with our whole communications team and, um, putting together our, our public-facing dashboard that's gonna really highlight the selectmen's priorities, what the milestones are to achieving those priorities, some of the things that, you know, we're talking about this evening, and, um, use that as a tool to help outreach the community, uh, get all of the departments and staff fully, um, engaged in the process of, of meeting these goals and priorities. And I, I think it's, it's really been, um, a great process that we're, we're working on, and we're gonna have some material in January, um, that we're gonna be able to put up on the town's website and report out and, and demonstrate, you know, progress steps on every single one of the, of the priorities. And so, I'm just really happy with the way the departments have been embracing, uh, the selectmen's priorities. They're very hungry for that type of feedback. So the actions that, that you folks are taking as a board is really setting the leadership tone for the town, and we've got everyone involved in, in pushing those out, and I, I think you're really gonna be pleased with not only the progress that people are making, but, um, the way we're gonna be able to outreach and engage the community around, um, this common understanding of what our priorities are, um, what we're doing to achieve those, what problems, if any, are out there. So, um, it's, uh, been a good process, very collaborative to have everyone involved in it, but it started with, you know, the Board of Selectmen setting those prop, those priorities. So thank you for that, and, um, we'll continue to keep you updated on that. And, and like I said, we're doing a lot of internal work, trying to create a dashboard that we can put up, um, on the town's website, and, and that's gonna, um, that's gonna be flying, um, by January, so. That's going great. We talked about the station ave corridor study. I'll mention one more time, that's gonna be Wednesday, the 13th at 6:00 PM, uh, Town Hall hearing room, right here. And the only other thing I wanted to mention, that, uh, the town budget submissions for all of the departments are due this week, so, um, I'll be working with our finance team to analyze all of those. We'll be meeting with each and every single department, um, and, and working on the budget, trying to, I, I know we've got a lot of challenges this year. Um, you heard a lot of, um, goals and things with the public safety departments. I know fire, staffing, uh, that's gonna be a critical issue. And, um, you know, we, we need to understand, this has been a problem for a long time, and it's always been placed that, well, when there's enough money in the ambulance fund, we'll add a couple of more people. And it, it's turned out as a long-term strategy that, that there's, um, inadequate funds available in the ambulance, uh, reserve fund to purchase all of the equipment that the town needs and, and fund all the manpower. So something's gotta give, there'll be a lot of issues, but I just wanted to let you know that, um, that, that budget's a major project, and so I'll be working very hard on that. And, um, you, you know, the, the timeframes, I have to have it finished by the end of December, so, well, everyone else will be, um, counting their Christmas plums, will be in some back room at Town Hall with a lot of smoke trying to.
Sharpen the pencils and get going.
Sharpen the pencils, that's, that's right. But this is just a few of the key things. Um, I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. Um, I got away to the Midwest with, with my family, and so it's great to be back here all recharged, and things have been very busy for the last two days, I'll tell you that.
That's where all the food comes from though, the Midwest, the heartland.
They started a, a new wildlife refuge out there that is populated with bison. Can you believe that? They're returning the bison to the plains.
They are, yes.
The big ones with the hairy and the horns.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
While we're on the town administrator's report, um, I had, uh, talked to, to Bob earlier today that we, we, some of us had the opportunity to go take a tour of the, uh, the water pumping stations and facilities, and that was a great tour. Um, but there was one stop on the tour that left an lasting impression, not, not that the others didn't, but was the stop at the, um, Union Street Water Pumping Station and, um, Town Archives.
Yes.
And I think, and this is something I just want to flag, I think we need to have an archive discussion, because that, that facility is in really rough shape, and we, we need, yeah, we need to really, um, you know, now that we're, it, it's what I call a legacy project. It's something, it's sort of a holdover from before, where, yeah, record storage, um, you know, is something that we need to prioritize and adequately resource. It's almost like, if we could find an archivist that we could clone for five years and then expand our storage capabilities so that they meet the current standards, and then embark on a project maybe to digitize, uh, I know, and I know funds have been set aside to do that, which is terrific, but we're probably, a lot more needs to be set aside. That whole area of work is just, uh, we, we need to figure out a way to have a discussion on the board, uh, about prioritizing that.
That somehow relates to the bison, right?
It does, it does. No, but I wanted to mention it to Bob, because Bob, when I, when I brought, when I, when I went into his office and asked him about it, they're, they're up on it, and they're working on it, and they're working on a plan. And, uh, my hope is, is that sometime soon, while we're looking at the budget, we can have a chance to, um, to, to address it then, so. You're right, it does de- deal with the bison. Um, we, we have an opportunity to rent out that area to.
I thought you were gonna tell me when you got to that particular station, you couldn't get through, 'cause there was a big bison there.
There was, there was, it was tough, it's tough.
It's some pretty old stuff here in this safe, and nothing like that, but I remember years ago getting access to do some research in some of these old books, and some of them really go back quite a ways.
Yeah, but.
In the town clerk's office, and then there's a safe right down here on this floor.
Yeah, yeah, the problem is we've run out of space. Uh, we need more secure space, um, and, uh, it's.
Didn't they have a water problem up there once that damaged a lot of records?
They did, they did, and that's the other problem.
It dehumidifier.
So the, the building that's there needs, either needs to be replaced, or it needs to be improved. Something needs to be done to it, but we need a better facility.
For documents, you gotta have certain air temperatures and all that stuff.
You got that right.
It's expensive per square foot, but the, the facilities are inadequate, both in terms of size and quality. There's no question, no question about that.
I would recommend on our list of things to do that we add a tour of the, uh, archives as a, as a.
Virtually no storage here at Town Hall, which I don't know if you're aware of that, but we've got these tiny safes for.
We'll call it the bison project. We had the Manhattan Project, now we have the bison project.
There you go, very good.
That's the code name.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we adjourn.
I'd second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm not gonna say anyone opposed.